A second to get going. All right, I'm going to assume that. We are, welcome Danvers, welcome to folks in the room. Who are the only ones who get to see this live actually, which is good. It's nice to see a turnout here of interested citizens. And this is the second night of our interviews for the position of superintendent for the Danvers Public Schools. We're going to start as we always do with our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So night two begins, we are pleased to have candidate Daniel Bauer with us this morning or this evening. And Robin or Alice, would you like to introduce Daniel to the town?
Okay, so Mr. Bauer is currently the principal of Malden, not Malden, that was my former district. Sorry. Marblehead High School and before that he was assistant principal in Beverly. And you're currently going for your doctorate?
Correct.
Correct, yes. So welcome, so we're going to have 10 questions, we'll each have two questions for you. And you'll have time for an opening, then we'll get to the questions, they're also in front of you for reference, some of them are a little lengthy. And then a closing and time for like any questions you have also. And like we did last night, if anyone on the committee has like a follow up to any of the questions, we obviously can do that too.
Great.
So thank you.
All right, thank you, Robin. So with that, we'll turn it over to you. Do you prefer Dan, Daniel, Mr. Bauer, Principal Bauer?
Dan is fine.
Okay. We'll turn it over to you for your opening statement.
Great, well, thank you for having me here. So excited to be here and spent a wonderful day, I know that's a follow up question, but just a little bit about me that you may not know. I'm originally from St. Louis, Missouri, made my way east where I went to school at the University of Pennsylvania. That's where I met my beautiful wife there and we've been married 30 years. I have two children, my son Zach who's 25 and my daughter who's 22. My daughter's a senior at Ithaca College at physical therapy. Actually did not get into education the traditional way. After I graduated from college, went into business for a year, then decided that wasn't for me and got into coaching college football. Went back to my alma mater and then got into small college football and then eventually made my way to Tufts University, where I made a transition to receiving a master's degree there and working, student taught at Wakefield High School. And from that point, opportunities have masked and I'm and from there. So I've been in public education for 22 years, it's my 22nd year, 17 years of been in administration. So I've really had the opportunity to see a district through a school lens in many different ways, in many different capacities. I think we are the sum of all of our parts. So I've had a lot of experience working in district in terms of budget, in terms of curriculum, teaching and learning, assessments, safety and all aspects that are important toward being the superintendent of schools. So I feel very blessed with some great opportunities that I've had. And I think bringing to Danvers, my leadership style is visible. I feel very strongly about being visible because that in itself shows, I think, those that need to see the superintendent, that he is present, he is approachable, empathetic, I listen, I like to problem solve. And I think most importantly, develop a team and take a collaborative approach. So in terms of that piece, I think it all comes back to student focus, what are your core values? I think when making decisions and looking at what's best, taking that lens, I think if you keep that as your core value, you can't go wrong because that's why we're here is for the benefit of our students. And also too, trying to develop the schools to be the best they can be so as an important part of our community. So that's in a nutshell, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our first question comes from Alice.
Thank you, Dan, so you have alluded to the busy day that you had today. So after today's walkthrough, how do you describe our school district? And what opportunities and challenges do you think we face?
So today's walkthrough was awesome. It started off coming in and the person at the front desk greeted me by my name, so I felt welcomed right away. The schools are in beautiful shape, they're well kept, you could see there's a lot of pride in the buildings. Everybody to a T was very welcoming and it seemed to me it was genuine. It wasn't just because I'm a candidate superintendent, they really, you could see the pride. And just meeting the central office team today and describing how long many of them have lived in this community, their children have gone to school in this community, those have moved to this community and you could just see that pride and how hard they're working in the teamwork that's within the central office team, I think is awesome. And then having an opportunity with Mr. Federico to walk the building and see the great things in the classrooms, that was exciting for me. The teachers were very welcoming and you know, it's hard to interrupt the lesson, but was able to go in and see many, many great things happening. The students were awesome. And then had an opportunity to meet with the central office team, actually the administrative team, the larger group, and really found that to be a group of individuals who truly care about Danvers Public Schools. And just knowing how hard the work is, they seem like a very collaborative group and very exciting that the work that they're doing. And then from there, transition to the middle school, had a chance to walk through and again, just saw great interactions. I saw students that really were engaged, I saw students that seemed to be excited to be there. And then made my way to two elementary schools, Riverside and the Smith School. And certainly, it was a lot of fun, it really was for me. Just to see the teachers working hard and at Riverside, it was around lunchtime, I guess they've been at indoor recess for four days, so all that energy was pent up. But they really got out and they were running the halls, but you could see the staff working and supporting one another. Then at the Smith, you know, right before dismissal, you look out the window, you see the snow and that's distracting for anybody. But the students when they're working and able to get in and I do have to say that I did do the gritty. So I don't know if that counts against me, but the principal asked and I did it and.
Powers.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
She likes to dance.
Yep, okay.
Right. But I think, you know, in terms of opportunities and the reason I'm here tonight, and I'm fortunate to be here tonight. But through my research and looking at Danvers schools and knowing people that work in district and knowing people connected, it just seems like people genuinely care, right? You have a staff that are vested in the schools. And there are many, many different parts, there's been a lot of hard work that's been done in the areas of curriculum and social, emotional and DEI. You see that happening, so there are a lot of really good parts that are there. So there are many opportunities there to keep the work going and honor the work that's been happening, but keep moving it forward. And certainly challenges, you know, as anything else, I think each one of the schools has a challenge that most high schools or middle or elementaries are facing. And certainly when you get to the high school, you see the different areas where teachers are trying many, many different innovative strategies in the classroom. And I saw some really neat things in the engineering room, I know they were prepping for midterms, but you can see the materials. I went into the, what used to be the wood shop, the tech area, and they're working hard in there. And certainly understanding that, you know, how can we make sure that we are providing opportunities for our students that are more than just what they may be getting within the typical traditional instructional setting. And I saw that and you see more opportunities for that too. In terms of the middle and the elementaries, the elementaries, you could see that you have the teams really working hard together with the teachers and the support staff. And certainly that piece is something, and certainly it looks like Riverside has a lot of students in there. And they were running all over and the Smith as well in terms of the support staff that's working really hard. So I can see that, that is an area to keep working and pushing to support the needs of our students. So then I got an opportunity to meet with the staff and I found it remarkable that at 3 o'clock on a Friday, I wasn't sure anybody would be there, right? And there was a great group of teachers that were there and you can, and I thought that was impressive, they asked very good questions, had an opportunity to meet with the union leadership. And you know, they're all looking for the same thing, they're looking for culture, they're looking for trust, they're looking for working together and collaboration. So it was very exciting to meet with those groups. And then had a nice session with the public before this meeting. So it was a very busy day, I was able to get home and get a sandwich and had the Domino's pizza, it was served in elementary schools today, but it was a nice day.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Josh, you are up next.
Great, thanks Dan. What metrics would you use to determine the success of a school district? And then what would you change or improve to make Danvers a top tier district in Massachusetts?
So metrics are as simple as standardized testing scores in terms of enrollment numbers, in terms of success after high school, where are students going? And also the rate, the percentage of students that actually succeed when they get to that second level. I think those are metrics that are very common and certainly ones that, when you look at that piece, I think you can break them all down and realize that it's not just the outcome of the high school, realizing that it's elementary and middle school that contributes. Our students, when they leave, when they graduate, they're products of the whole system. So the work that happens at the elementary carries over to the middle and the high school, so the alignment is critical. So the curriculum work that is being done, the vertical alignment there must continue to happen and move forward, right? So when students make their way into the middle school, the expectations are very clear for what would be, would be for a successful transition into the middle school, right? So there has to be cohesion between the elementaries in the middle and also with the middle to the high school, understanding. And being able to create opportunities where those teams are able to meet, right? So they understand and can help with that transition. Certainly consistency within the elementary schools is important in terms of the curriculum and the school improvement plans, which I see, that's nice, they're really focused in. And there's very good consistency with that. Because again, once they get to the high school piece, then again, it's the product and certainly being able to revise and refine those items. So in terms of the strategies involved with MCAS testing at the elementary, looking at the strategies and looking for opportunities, breaking down the item analysis and reviewing the curriculum, how that aligns. And also keep in mind when they, when they move their way up to high school, being able to offer some standardized testing time that may be able to provide environments. For example, if you offer the PSAT for all students, that's a nice opportunity that the students have to take a standardized test that might not necessarily take it. So they could take it earlier to work on the practice, get the feedback for that to build for future success. So I think those are all related and I guess when you get into the postgraduate successfulness and how well they do, not just getting into college, but being able to succeed once they get there, I think that piece is an important statistic that again, gets into what has happened through the experience of creating the relevancy within the high school environment, so they're able to take on the rigors of post-high school work, right? And creating opportunities within the high school that are, they're relevant and match where they're at. So creating strong pathways so students can plan and get to where they need to be. So if they have a pretty good idea of what area to go through the pathway for life after high school, they'll have a better chance for success. So I think those are other areas that are important. The offerings that you have at the high school, ensuring that they are providing a challenging curriculum, right? That meets the needs and certainly meets the profile, but also being able to provide, my opinion, all students the opportunity for success. Look at the interventions, how are those going, how are your tier one interventions? They match up where you're providing students opportunities so that they have, that they have a better chance for success. So that it's not just the high flyers, which they'll do well and we need to support and have strong offerings for them. But we need to ensure that we provide those, again, tier one and tier two if necessary supports to lift and provide an equitable educational experience for all students. And that in itself will raise the profile too, right? We're not talking just the top, we're talking the whole group, so.
Could I ask a follow up question to that?
Sure.
So Dan, you, thank you for your entry plan and I think this kind of connects a little bit to the metrics, so I didn't know if you kind of wanted to walk through. I mean, it's very detailed, so but maybe connect it a little bit to like the metrics piece.
Sure.
Might be helpful for the audience too, because I know they don't have it in front of them.
Right. So in terms of the metrics piece, I think an important part is being able to review, obviously, and part of an entry plan not only is to meet people and develop relationships with the stakeholders, but looking at the artifacts that are available. So being able to review curriculum, be able to review the scope and sequence, to see where the alignment is or opportunities to create alignment. Be able to go through and see what practices are there in terms of the early childhood part, what's happening with the literacy programming, what's happening with the writing program, the math programming and look for those components there. Because again, it does start at the elementary level, it's not just secondary. So it has to match and that's where the start is. And we know if students perform at a strong level at the elementary, they'll have a greater chance for success, which will then increase the metric as well. And certainly going into special education, looking again, talking about how we're supporting our students. And that kind of went into earlier what I was talking about, and tier one is for all students. But looking at what we're doing in terms of our programming to create, I think, consistency within that and providing, making sure that we provide support so they have enough support so they can do the work that needs to be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask a quick follow up too, which is how should a community, you know, what's the importance of MCAS? What should a community be looking for in terms of the MCAS scores? What's its utility, you know, how do you focus on that, how much do you focus on it?
So the MCAS is a snapshot where the students are, right? It's not the end all and be all. I think it's a collective picture of all the other metrics that we talked about. But it does give a good snapshot in terms of that can be aligned with the state, right? We can see what other districts are doing, what our district is doing, performance within the grade levels. And you can even pull out data even further in terms of how are our subgroups doing as well? There are students that are high needs and special education plans, 504s and such, economically disadvantaged. So you can look at those metrics to see, well, then that kind of ties back into the practices that we're doing. And seeing are we, have we made improvements, what's the student growth percentage? And if it's not where it needs to be and if there's some disproportionality there, we can go back and review our practices to see, again, if we're utilizing the curriculum that we have, are there some areas in there that can be improved or the practices such as I know you're using the formative assessment cycle and looking at that and how well is that really going? You know, that's a lot of work and that's really awesome to be able to do that because you can gauge where students are and recalibrate instruction. So I think that is a piece of the puzzle is the MCAS, it's not the end all and be all, but it does provide a snapshot. So if you look at this year's data, right, and if you look at a category such as the meets or exceeds expectations, you know, many schools have dropped. They dropped across the state and we know that's coming off the heels of the pandemic. But that data in itself is fine, but then what are the educators or experts doing in terms of breaking down the item analysis and looking for areas of opportunity to improve such as in English language arts? Maybe there is something in terms of the writing that wasn't aligned well in the curriculum that could be improved upon, right? For example, in the math programming, look at the scope and sequence, possibly, right, maybe geometry was an issue, I'm thinking secondary. And maybe some of those items can be brought in earlier before the MCAS testing in March. So there are strategies there that can be done as leverage that again, match everything. So it's not the end all and be all, but it is a marker. And again, you can, you can benchmark that across other districts throughout the state. You can also benchmark that into per pupil spending and there's a lot of other categories when you get into the accountability piece as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Robin, you have the next question.
I have the next one. So how do you keep your, I cannot speak to it, how do you keep your committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest? What has been their response and feedback?
So I think it's critical, the relationship that we have, that you're informed, right? My job is to take care of the operations of the district, but obviously making sure that when I, issues occur or items that are coming up, that I have the forethought to being very clear with my communication in terms of this is coming up, this is what is happening and this is what's on the radar, right? Nobody likes to be surprised. My mantra is no surprises and that is a two way street, right? So I think that's my responsibility as I'm managing the district, is to be able to keep the school committee informed of items that are coming up in terms of where we are, when you get into budgetary, when you get into program of studies, when you get into the curriculum piece, when you get into testing and all that, right? And obviously, certainly if there are areas of interest, right? So whatever that area of interest may be, certainly being able to provide information that can provide insight to you as the committee, right? Because it could be a budget implication or something, policy implication that needs to be taken care of. And I think that is important that we have that level of communication. Again, I wouldn't want you to be surprised, you certainly don't want to hear, pick up from a phone call, something is going on that is critical. It's my job to inform you as I'm working through whatever needs to be done within the district.
Thank you. Is there any in your like position as a principal now where you've had to kind of, can you give an example where you had to keep, you know, people informed, I guess? Like whether it was the school committee, even though you were principal or maybe a superintendent, just to kind of like walk us through, I guess, something?
Yeah, so in typically, in typical fashion, I have a weekly update, just a very simple communication. I try to be clear and concise, parents are very busy, but just listing the items of interest within the high school community, highlighting anything that is upcoming and certainly that provides parents an opportunity, providing opportunity within that update of our school counseling area. So if you're, if you're a parent of seniors, you understand what's happening. If you're a parent of freshmen, you understand the transition programming on that piece, that's a regular. I would as a superintendent have a weekly update that would come up, that would highlight positivity within the district and really expect by principals to have a weekly update for the school communities that I think is important. So parents can plan on what's happening within their school community. But superintendent would set the tone for a weekly communication that would go out of a high level of, again, the positivity and important items that are coming up. And I would lead that with earlier before the weekend and then have the principals do that right on that Sunday more than likely. You're welcome.
Any follow up? All right, so the next question is mine. And context, I think we've all seen an increase in mental health issues with students, anxiety, school, I won't call it school phobia, but you know what I mean? Difficulty being in the school environment. So what role do you think that the public schools have in addressing the increasing mental health issues among our young people? And what ideas do you have to address those issues?
Well, it is our responsibility because if students are not in a good place, the likelihood of learning is very little, right? As well as our professionals in the building too. So our students reflect what's happening in the greater community. So if students are struggling with mental health issues, it's our obligation to provide supports to ensure that they have what they need within the school. So it's as simple as analyzing, you know, is it a situation where, do you have enough staffing? Do you have enough clinicians within your building, social workers? Would that be helpful, do you have enough aides in that piece? Would there be helpful to have awareness and training within the staff, right? In terms of working with that piece and being able to get a student who might be in crisis to the support they need. I think that is critical that we understand that part. And also being able to talk as a staff, right? And really, the piece of mental health, our students, it's, they understand mental health, they understand issues, particularly our high schoolers, you know? And being able to provide programming within your health classes, that could be some outreach within mental health. And I've seen that within the high school level, but that certainly can move down into the middle and elementary, different age appropriate levels, right? For awareness, I think that's important. And also too, you know, it's a community issue. So you know, for example, in Marblehead, we have the Mental Health Task Force and we're able to have conversations. We've had a couple of community conversations about, one was grief and loss. We had also a panel and a discussion on substance awareness. So and I know that's not mental health per se, but having avenues in the building as a community to take it on that way. Because again, the schools have that burden as itself, as I said, students need to be in a good place in order to learn. But it was also a community issue too, so being able to have that partnership can go a long way. To ensure there are resources within the school and also to be able to, you know, address the issues that are happening with our young students. Being able to look at what resources and certainly programming we can bring into the school that's appropriate and can address mental health and be supportive. Educational programming certainly could bring in speakers and lecturers as well and interactive items too. And also you can get some student driven items too, because don't be afraid to lean into your students as well. Because they certainly can have some ideas. For example, the high school may create a mental health awareness club, right? That's very easy that they could do, I'm sure they may have one here, I know that that's common, that students do things where they collaborate because they're interested, they want to help others and that's another level of support.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Gabe.
Hey Dan. Describe a time when you faced a diversity, equity and inclusion issue at your school. What was the issue and how did you address it?
Okay. Yeah, not, not to give away all the specifics, I have to be careful, but certainly a social media post that came out and it ran like wildfire, right? And, and that came out and connected back to our school community. So the number one thing was certainly getting that and being able to consult with my team and so with the superintendent. Also communicated with our chief of police as well, to tie it in together and then be able to put out a communication in a timely manner that addresses that piece. And really understate, be able to state and point out that this isn't acceptable. This is not what we're about, this is not our mission and be able to put in our mission, this is what our mission is. And then obviously from that piece, that opens up, right, a lot of dialogue, what's going on, what happened, who did what? And certainly creates a lot of tension for sure, but you have to address it, you have to go right at it. You have to identify what that is, but you have to be careful and work together. That's why it's important when things like that come up, you do, depending on the nature of it, work with your police and work with your team, right? That's something that you can't take on alone, something that requires teamwork because of the complexity of the issue. And then falling back to how is this impacting our students? And what do we need to do to support our students in this piece? Bringing in a speaker to work with our students, bringing in some support for our staff. And then being able to work with students that were most affected by the social media post, right? And then being able to create something that would be educational, moving out forward, that could particularly help students that might be connected with a situation like that. I try to be a little general, I know, because of the sensitivity, but it's certainly, it's unfortunate, but I think being direct, being honest upfront, providing the information that you can, right? Because you're always balancing that piece of the information that gets there so people understand that that's not acceptable. Because I think that's important for all students and staff and community to feel like they're safe. So being able to ensure that safe environment is to be able to state that that's not acceptable and that's not what we're all about and this is what we are about. And then being able to follow up with whatever supports are necessary to help those that are impacted by that event. And then look for not the one off, again, look at the work that we're doing to see like, how can we sustain this? So items like this hopefully don't happen again, but to ensure that our students feel safe and supported and have the tools to navigate through a difficult situation. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right.
I think my next question is probably a really good follow up to that. So can you tell us about a time that you faced conflict within your district or your school? And then take us through how you dealt with it and what you learned?
Yes, you know, I don't know if you would say that COVID was conflict, but two years of it, I think you're looking for more of a specific issue that occurred. Yeah, we faced a pretty good issue within our school, not a good issue at all. One where there was an issue and we had a student walk out, right? And I thought that was probably the lowest point of my professional career, right? I've felt so badly for our students that were impacted by an issue that occurred and not being able to provide the support they needed so they felt that it was important that their voices were heard and there was a walkout at our school. And from that piece there, in looking for ways that we could give our students voice, how can we turn this situation into a positive? How can we provide them opportunities for growth? And how can I, as the principal, learn? And how can our staff and support learn from the situation so that way our students feel supported? So something like that would never happen again, where they have avenues and voice where we can work together. And there were positives that did come out of that, there were, a lot of positives. In fact, a few of these items are still sustained to this day, which I feel very good about. But I think at that piece too, that's where the empathy, right? And being steady and being able to show that you are student first to work through a very adverse situation. Because I think that shows that you not only care, but you want to make the situation better so that students feel safe and they feel supported.
Could I ask a follow up? So what did you learn personally through that?
So I learned personally that communication is key and being able to be timely with that piece and being able to provide timely communication to our staff. But also being able to ensure that there's a vehicle for student voice within our school community. And really reflective on that piece and not make assumptions that there are a few things going on that might be voiced, but really looking into it. But also be on the mind of a cycle of reflection, right? Looking at analyzing how things are and just not make assumptions like things seem to be okay. seem to be okay. Well, you can't do that, right? Because if you're sitting still and with a status quo, you're falling behind. And that's not fair to those that care, that you care about.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that. Okay, so you talked about conflict and, you know, what you learned from it. So thinking about, obviously, as a superintendent, you're going to, you're going to hear a lot from the community. So I guess how like, how would you handle feedback from like stakeholders and possible, yeah, as a superintendent?
Yeah, so.
Or the importance, I guess, of that. Like, what would you do with that information? And how would you handle it?
Well, I think it's important that people feel they've been hurt, right? Because feedback can take many vehicles, whether it be a survey or direct conversation, which I like focus groups, individual meetings. But how is that feedback taken and how can that be utilized for potential growth, right? And not all feedback necessarily might lead to growth, but I think it's being honest and upfront with where that is going and being able to listen. And if it's something that would require attention and could possibly bring change, being able to involve those stakeholders within that and being honest about that part. You know, a number of the changes that have occurred in our school was from feedback from students, from staff. And and I think that's important that you take the feedback and you can leverage it to be positive with it. But again, again, it's working through the feedback because there's all different, different items of feedback. And if it's feedback that's not quite matching the alignment of goals and strategies or strategic plan, being honest with that piece, but not turning that person away. So because they may have future feedback that we would be important, right? So I think that is, that is critical. So you want people to bring feedback, right? But you don't want to shut them off if it's feedback that may not work at that particular time. But you could certainly leverage that individual later for potential feedback. So you want to create that relationship where they feel like it's valued, they're being heard, they're listened to, because we don't always agree on everything, right? Things may not always match according to where things need to be. But I think, again, it goes into that piece of being approachable and being able to be honest and take the feedback and work from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's see. Josh, is it Josh next?
That's me. Okay, Dan, think about from your last two positions, either as assistant principal in Beverly or in principal currently in in Marblehead. Could you describe a specific time where you had to challenge the status quo to make a change? And then what was the situation? What steps did you take in order to make that change?
Yeah, so I will say the status quo. I got a question ahead of you, Josh. Sorry. The status quo. So we removed study halls from a high school, right? So the status quo is that study hall provides an opportunity for students to study, right, to make up work, particularly with an over-scheduled student, right, that that are involved in many extracurricular activities, the study hall time of the day, that that is a nice time for them. But it doesn't match time on learning. It it can't always be as leveraged effectively as possible. I saw as principal that, you know, whenever there would be behavioral issues, a lot of times would be during that unstructured time in study halls. So how can you then bring a change to something that is like, well, study halls are very important. So it's going through that involving group of stakeholders, getting feedback, feedback from students in terms of, you know, how are they using that time? Getting feedback from the teachers and such, how is that time being utilized? And realizing that, yeah, the time itself, it is important, right? It's, it's, it's more important than maybe is perceived, right? Again, not making assumptions, but asking those questions and getting that feedback. And then taking that from a part where you can take the study hall out, but wood can go in its place. So we developed a magic block, a win block or U block, that is a common time. If we could build that into our schedule where teachers are available, students can then self-select where they go to utilize that time. You know, that develops not only relationships with students and teachers, that empowers students to pick an area where they may need some assistance with an over-scheduled student that may not be able to stay after school for extra help. They have that time built in, or if they've been out, they have an opportunity to make up a test, make up work. But the status quo would have been easy just to keep it as is because that's what has happened. But it wouldn't have happened if we didn't involve the stakeholders to get that information, because it's easy to dismiss, well, study halls, that's when problems are happening. No, it actually was a valuable time. But how can we leverage it to be useful within the schedule that can meet time on learning requirements in the sense of having interactions and direct interactions with the teacher, right? The teacher that they may need some extra help again. And I think by doing that piece and then being able to communicate out what's happening and run a pilot with that, we ran a pilot magic block for a period of time. But it also wouldn't have happened if my staff wasn't empowered to take the lead on a lot of this, taking the lead on going out and researching what is a win block, a U block, what is the best use of an advisory? Because it came about that too. Being able to empower the staff so they felt that they can bring those strategies back, create the pilot, and then allowing them latitude to run with it, to implement that, provide the support, and be able to celebrate the successes. So that's just one small thing on a status quo, but it actually was a large thing because I believe that it packs and benefits our students and our staff.
How was it received initially, I guess, from, from the students and or anybody in the building?
Well, there were little hiccups initially. It was received, once it actually started running, received well. I believe it's been a success. We have surveys we're going to create for students and for staff to see where it is at this point, kind of getting to the midpoint in the year. Where it was a little bumpy was the realization is that a block was going to come out of the schedule, be replaced, and the fear for some of our students who are taking advanced placement classes and those that might be one class that's offered, like advanced placement chemistry or physics, that might limit their options within the schedule. But we did a lot of research. We did presentations with the students. And once they're able to see that the schedule worked with that part. But there was a little anxiety by some of our students because they felt like, well, I can't do this and then do choir, or I can't. But I believe they should be able to do as much as they can. So it was important to us to do a research upfront, like this will work and and match and meet the requirements for them to be not only fully scheduled, but have the classes that they want. So I think once they've actually ran and we got through it, they've, they've seen the benefits of it and getting the anecdotal feedback from, from staff is important. And I asked students too, how's it going? How do you enjoy it? And it's been nice. And it's a nice S E L relief as well for the grind of a school day.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do the families feel about it?
So I've gotten some of the anecdotal reviews is that they feel that it's been positive. I heard from a few parents that their children can make up work if they've been out for an extended period of time. That's been positive. They're able to, you know, one of the blocks we create, it's called an activity block out of the three days. One of them is an activity where you can do a club, you can do just simple fun things. And they like that chance for students to be able to relieve and release. So that part of it, the feedback I received has been positive. But I'm looking forward to launching the surveys just to get more information back to see. Because ideally, you know, it's great that I feel it's going well, but I need to listen more to get that feedback because maybe there are areas of it that we can tweak. And a few students have provided some insight that allow where maybe that magic block is in another spot might be more advantageous for them.
Okay, thank you.
Can I pause for a second?
Yes.
I just want another water.
Oh, yeah.
I'll pause. I'm thirsty.
Oh, it's coming.
Sorry.
Stage right.
Adam said there are three waters up here, but I only had one.
Adam.
There you go.
That's fine, Mary. Thank you.
All right.
I got an extra bottle. Okay, thanks so much. I appreciate it.
All right.
I think we're, I think we're ready to go.
We're number eight.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's fine. So how would you hold educators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction?
So I think it's important that we're very clear in terms of utilizing the evaluation process, which is standard across all schools, right, across our state, and being able to work with our principals in terms of what are the key areas of focus within that piece? Being able to ensure that our principals and and those doing evaluations are staying on track in terms of the requirements for how many walkthroughs and formal observations, ensuring that's happening. But also taking that focus piece within, if the emphasis within teaching, learning, or curriculum instruction, you know, we could look for areas of emphasis on that as well. And what I would like to do as superintendent is certainly be able to work with building principals. I like to get into buildings. I like to be visible and certainly do walkthroughs in my end, non-evaluative, non-evaluative at all on my end, but more of a calibration so we can match, set our goals in terms of what particular standard we want to look for, whether it's a safe learning environment or different levels of engagement. Being able to set that pace. So as we work together, we can certainly give feedback to one another after we've done a series of walkthroughs in each building. And I find that as principal being very helpful. And I want to continue that as superintendent because I believe that allows me to work with my leadership team because they're the ones on the ground doing the evaluations and working through and being able to be consistent with that as well. I think that's really important. And certainly if if an educator is struggling, you know, obviously, it's our duty to ensure that we're working together. The whole process is teamwork, right? And certainly if there's a struggle somewhere, then, because the whole evaluation system is set up to be a partnership, right? So you're working with your evaluator. And if they sense that is going wrong in a particular area, then they provide feedback, opportunities to improve and continue to work with that.
So as far as the walkthroughs, so you'd go with leadership team. How would you then share that information out to educators so that they would know, like, this is where we are? This is what's been effective?
Well, I think a couple of things. So again, with no surprises, right? And I know position now is important. So when the superintendent walks in, you know, everybody sees us up and I understand that part. So that's why it's a, it's a process and that's why it's important to be non-evaluative in my part. And it's important that when I work with the leadership team, as we're calibrating whatever particular strand is our focus area, that we're able to provide feedback as a team. So as they're going through their particular walkthroughs and they're doing the evaluation, you know, we're all speaking the same, right? We're all looking for same items. We're all like, understanding that process of providing feedback, right? And I do, so taking a shift as the building principal, I do ask if the teachers would like feedback from that. And I don't put it in a note write-up or anything. A lot of the teachers will take me up. And if I see something that's excellent, I'll go right back and provide specific feedback on that. Or I could talk with my team and say, these are some areas that we really need to be working toward and and working with our instructors to see where we can make some improvements. So I think that is an important piece too. And certainly could be part of a superintendent's goal as well.
Okay, thank you.
Because obviously I would be sharing my goal out with.
Yes.
With this committee.
Thank you.
I'm next. And my question really has to do with budgeting in terms of how you go about setting budget priorities, building a budget and communicating those priorities during what can be perilous budget times.
I was afraid you used the right word.
I did.
Can I take a drink of water first on that one? So to start with, I think it works back in terms of working together as a group. What are, what are our priorities? What are we looking for? Are we looking to create an exemplary educational experience for all students? And being able to go back to, are we looking at a zero base or a level four? Where are we looking? And being able to be very clear with that. So I can provide clarity to my leadership team as they look through their buildings for priorities, right? But everything should be aligned to your strategic plan in terms of what you're looking to do, because that is how you leverage the things that you need that are important to your school that then aligns with the importance and what we're working for as a district, right? So as an example, S E L, right? If that creating a safe learning environment, what are things that are happening? What are things that we can do to enhance that experience for our students? And that is very helpful with that piece, being able to align to that, whether it's curriculum instruction, whether it's the reading programs, writing programs, math, what have you, being able to connect and align with that. So what are our priorities? And what are we looking for? And working with our staff, what do they need for support? And I also think it's important when you're looking at your budget, in particular with your school-based budget, it's important to be reflective because things shift, times shift. So if personnel is shifting, you know, being able to reallocate funding to other areas is very important. Now, we have to be fiscally responsible, right? Our resources are precious that we have. So we need to ensure for public trust that we're maximizing our funds to take care of the needs of our students and for our staff. So once we've gone through that exercise of maximizing that piece, then we keep working towards our priorities and our asks. So it's a collaborative process where it's works through the building level, where the expectations, the building leaders are working with their staff and certainly with their SAC, right? Because the SAC for each building is public, right? Where you have parents and you have community members to work through that piece. So when they bring the priorities back as a team, we can sit down and look at where they are and see and and ask that the match is there with our strategic plan. So we can be very specific and very clear. If we're looking at budget lines, what budget lines have we utilized to the fullest? What budget lines maybe we can make adjustments to as things change, right? So for example, if you have a big budget line on instructional supplies that might be more paper-based, and you have a budget line that's digital media, as we are shifting more towards technology in our schools, maybe we're making adjustments and shifts there as well. And again, if the technology ties into the strategic plan, perfect, beautiful, that's where we're at. In terms of personnel, we talked a lot about the mental health, right, and importance of helping our students. So again, looking at, are we staffed properly at our schools? Do we need more help there? Can we reallocate if there's some, some changes and shifts within our enrollment? Because enrollment has to be looked at as well, because you have to project that out. And certainly look with the clear eye, not just for this year coming up, but with the projections the next few years out, right? NESTAC provides a projection of enrollment over course of years and need to leverage that because not only you're projecting for this year when you build your budget, but having an eye for what are the patterns coming up in the future. And then once that is all brought back in, it's, it's my job to work with my team in order to create the priorities so we can bring a clear presentation of the budget ultimately to the school committee, right? So that's clear on what we're asking for. So it's connected to the strategic plan. It aligns with our school improvement plans as well. So these are not just one-offs. We've done our due diligence in terms of maximize, maximizing our resources. And we look at items that might be able to be moved around are. So that way, when we come back to the school committee, we have a greater understanding. Now, this is a whole process. It's back and forth, right? It's a process over time. You're probably starting the planning in October, late October, early November, in terms of setting the calendar. So my team, they understand like, what are the expectations, you know? When, when, sorry. Sorry, getting fired up here. What my team understands, you know, when they need to do the work, because remember, school started. Once we get into October, now you're looking at things in the school year move. So you're asking, you need to provide enough time for your staff to really examine, you know, what are the budgetary needs? And as that process works through, you know, understanding what is that timeframe? So we have enough time to work through the priorities as we sit down as the leadership team and be able to share out, right? If we have a target number that we need to meet within and we have to set priorities, it's important to put all that up. So we're all working together because the needs at the high school may be very different at the middle than at the elementary, but realize maybe there's more immediacy at the elementary. So therefore the priorities need to go there at this particular time, and maybe some items need to shift. So that teamwork and collaboration is important because again, resources are limited. So we need to do the best that we can to maximize the resources to give our students and staff the best opportunity for success. Then obviously that process comes back to, I'm sure we would have, you know, a hearing or a committee meeting with my team as they present. So you get a better understanding of what the asks are at the elementary schools, at the middle school, at the high school. So you hear that information, right? And as we work back. And I'm sure over that time, once we get, get it down to a point where it's agreeable, we've worked with the town manager, obviously knowing where the resources are coming in and where the drivers are, right? In terms of salaries, understanding where that is, the lines and lane changes and outside, outside resources that are coming in, you know, which after 70, where that's going, circuit breaker and understanding all that piece. And other revenue sources maybe we can tap into, obviously transportation and certainly special education out of district placements, where is that going? Because that is certainly something that can be, that should not be a surprise as we work through, but have to make sure that we have enough of a cushion to accommodate that if we see that coming.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gabe, you are up, sir.
Yeah, it's the final question. How would you manage staffing in the face of changing demographic needs, specifically enrollment decline at the high school, an increasing enrollment, and new classroom space at the elementary level?
So we, we talked about it a little bit earlier with, with the budget piece, right? So understanding, and this is where it can come to a crossroads, right? Is, is you might see some declining enrollment, realizing we're coming out of a pandemic, realizing that the social emotional needs of our students are an all-time high, realizing that there has been learning loss, you know, in terms of that piece. In terms of that piece, maybe there needs to be some shifts where maybe you're not running as many sections as you were running at the high school, but how can you leverage those sections to positions that might provide mental health support, maybe special education support, maybe items there that weren't funded initially? How can you take that and leverage that piece there, too? And also to the point where looking at, again, this gets into that whole piece of working with the elementary, the high school and the middle school together, realizing that if, you know, moving one piece to another, if that's necessary, those are discussions and those are tough discussions that may occur. That's a very reality there, too. And understanding that if you're running into declining enrollment pieces, that is a reallocation, but understanding that there are retirements that occur, right? There are people that may leave the district and maybe those positions, those are called softer phase outs, if you know what I mean. So you're not actually, you know, taking somebody's position, but those positions could be freed up based on those things and knowing that maybe you could move those items to meet more of an emphasis in the high school or as you look through what's happening at the elementary with some of the enrollment increases there. Again, varying those positions and making sure that there's plenty of staffing that's required at the elementary. Thank you.
Any follow-ups?
Just a quick follow. So I know Essex Tech, I heard a little bit, they was talking a little bit in the, in the community discussion around Essex Tech. Have you had attrition problems with, at Marblehead for Essex Tech? And what have you done to kind of mitigate those?
Not necessarily Essex Tech, but we've, we've, we've had some decline in enrollment as well. Certainly there are privates that come into play. There's always a number that will go to Essex Tech. And certainly areas that we're looking at as a high school to leverage is to ensure that we're creating opportunities to create transitional programming with their middle school, right? Providing opportunities where the middle school community can come into the high school for open house, come up for a curriculum night. We have an elective day that allows the eighth graders and eighth graders from our feeder schools to come in for the morning to go through our various electives, to see the great things that are happening, right? And that usually creates a lot of excitement around course selection time. I think also, too, it kind of goes into, as we said, about promoting the positivity we talked about outside of your district, right? And being able to show all the great things that are happening, right? Because there are many great things that are happening. And how can you leverage social media for that? How can you leverage the good work of your students and staff? And how can you promote that, not just at the eighth grade level, but even at the younger levels, right? Because people are making decisions, they have many more options today. And certainly coming out of COVID, that is the case. So I think it's important that we are able to show, these are the great things that are happening. You asked the question about metrics and stuff, and that's important, too. But also the success of all of our students, right? And being able to show all the great things that we're doing to meet the needs of our students. I think that is important. And always working with an eye for areas we can improve on that and ensuring that the high school and middle school are working together, as well as the transitional between the elementaries and the middle. And how can we leverage our students at the high school in leadership positions? Again, we talked about student voice, I know that's happening, I know Adam's working on that, and bringing them into the middle school and to the elementary, because that's really impressionable, right? That has a good piece of building positive culture within the elementaries and the middle to the high school. They feel good about that. How can you involve more of the students at those levels with the high school? I think that's an important piece, too. So.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, one thing, too. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. But also, you know, at the high school, I know there are many innovative programs and I learned a lot of things today, right? We're not a tech school, we don't have those particular programs, but there are pathways that are available, innovative pathways. There's an early college program, which is very appealing. So there are many opportunities that are at the high school, because you also have a very rich fine arts program, a very rich fine arts program. You have a very strong DECA program with huge, over 130 that are involved, maybe more than that. And just talking with Isaiah, who was in the audience earlier, you know, he's involved with seven clubs, right? He's involved and there's, so that student voice is growing. And that connectivity with your school builds. And it's that message that works with the freshmen to the seniors, the seniors to the freshmen, but back to the transitional, that's extremely powerful, right? And that certainly may not offset everything, right? But I think it provides great opportunity, not only increase and build culture, but it builds that part when people are in the process of making decisions and knowing that we've had great experiences with the high school, it's connected, that's where we want to be, that's where you want to be.
Great, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions from the group? All right, so it's time for your closing statement. And so we're interested to hear anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay. Well, again, I just want to thank not only the teachers, the administrative team, the students for putting up with me today, but all who's involved. It was a very welcoming visit, it was a great experience today and it was a lot of fun. So I just want to thank everybody that made that possible. Thank you, school committee, for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about educational leadership and all the positivities that I could bring as your superintendent of Danvers Public Schools. You know, I just want to go back into my closing that I've been very selective in this process. I know all the great expectations of Danvers. People ask me, why Danvers? And I say, well, quite frankly, it's a community that values education, they value what's happening with their children. It's a community that has high expectations and that's where I want to be, a community with high expectations. The other part, too, that I think is very important is that if you look at my background, you know, I'm very loyal and I'm hardworking and I'm one that I haven't moved around many positions, right? I've been in three schools in 22 years of public education, right? So I'm not looking for a stepping stone. I'm looking to be involved in a community, provide a level of leadership at superintendent level, but also be able to take, I think, my people skills and steady leadership that can guide through tough times, celebrate success, but also using my sound judgment that I've developed, not only through my 17 years of educational experience, but through my entire leadership background. Because I think that's important as the role of a superintendent, to provide that piece, to provide that so your great team that you have, that's doing great things, can do even more work, right? And the other thing, too, that I think is important, that goes for building positive culture, and I believe the superintendent sets the tone for that. I know I can do that, building a team. But I think the other part that's important, too, is my educational experience has been on the North Shore, where I have a lot of contacts. And again, this job is a big job and being able to tap into those contacts and networking is critical, whether it be at the superintendent level, whether it be in the corporate level, elected official level. It's all important that, and I understand the North Shore, I've been here, so I know the dynamics of it. And being able to have a superintendent that has that understanding, I think is important, right? Because again, it's a situation where you're looking to build culture, you're looking to keep things moving, and I believe I can do that for you and I'd be honored to be your superintendent. So again, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you, Dan, and we appreciate everything you had to say. So at this point, what we're going to do is take a recess and give D cap a chance to get ready to go live.
Yes.
And then we'll come back in 10 or 15 minutes or so. We certainly want to have a word to thank you for being here before you go, and then we'll talk about the process.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to be in recess for 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the cue for D cap. So now we are, we're live to the town while we talk about the voting process and our consultant, Dorothy Presser, has joined us on stage and she provided some guidelines, I think, from the MAS and C in terms of a recommended process for going through the voting. And so I guess just by way of comment from what I see, number one, there's obviously a lot of very helpful language for specific motions and things that we need. But it seemed to me two, two decisions really jumped out that ought to be, you know, we discuss publicly and let people know, here's how we're going to do it. The first is pretty simple and straightforward. How many votes does it take for someone to, to get, basically to get the position or at least be offered the position? And we've always something by a majority of the members present, and that would be my inclination. I assume that we're all going to be present. And so it would take three votes for any candidate to, to be appointed or be chosen. The other point that I thought was important to talk about and involves more of a choice for us, which is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothy, there's two potential ways to go about the process. One is the ballot method, the other is the motion method. We would start in either method by discussing the candidates before a motion or a vote. With the ballot method, we all simply get to say who we would support. With the motion method, someone would make a motion to appoint X or to offer the position to X, and the language I know isn't what you provided. And then we would motion a second and a vote. So that understanding is correct in terms of, okay. Is there anything else before we have our discussion that you want to add to what we should be thinking about?
I guess, you know, one other thing is I know some of you have been busy doing reference checks. So it's at that, at the beginning, usually what happens with the reference checks is at the beginning of the discussion, before you really get into the discussion, the people that did reference checks would take some time to share their, their information that they gained in the, in doing the reference checks. Which isn't, you know, a verbatim, you know, I talked to this person and they said this. But just sort of an overview of, these are the people I spoke to, these are the things that came through. Maybe there's a quote along the way that you want to share or something along those lines. But generally, that's where the discussion would start and then you would move into, generally what I see is sometimes it's, generally what I see is that someone will start off and say, I believe that this person is the stronger, strongest candidate, or I think that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about these two people and these are, you know, what I'm thinking about each of them. And then each person gets a chance to speak. At the end of that conversation, you might be clear to everybody who's going to be the person, and then you could move to your ballot or your motion. Or you might go around a second time after people have been able to hear what their colleagues thought, and maybe that helps them coalesce some of their own thinking.
Okay. So I'm interested from my colleagues in sort of how you feel about the ballot method versus the motion method, in general sense.
I mean, we used to, we usually make a motion.
I'm sorry?
We usually make a motion.
We do.
So I, I, I guess, I feel as though if that's what we normally do when we vote, why would we change that for this? But I also know we haven't voted for a superintendent in several, several years. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know, is it kind of like a 50/50, what each kind of school committee does as far as that goes?
Yeah, I don't think there's any prevalent practice. I mean, it is kind of a different thing than your typical.
Regular vote, right.
Are we going to pass this policy?
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
Other members, what do you think?
I would, I'm, I'm fine with the motion vote. I would just recommend that we do unanimous vote if, if possible. I'd like to, or at least get, get some feedback on that and see if, if my colleagues agree with that versus a three and then done.
So I, can I, so very often, if about, if a motion does not get immediate unanimous support, someone will make a motion to revote, to make it a unanimous vote, you know? So, and sort of the rationale behind that is letting whoever you're going to offer the job to know you didn't get support right away, but we're all going to support you when you come in. I mean, that's sort of the logic behind it.
What's the other district? Do they do the unanimous vote or is it?
I, that's, you know, again, to Robin's question, what happens, that's pretty common to follow, if it wasn't a unanimous vote the first time around, to sort of follow up and make it unanimous.
But, but other districts don't do like a, a majority? They go to?
Oh, no, they would, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Three vote, five votes versus three votes.
Yeah. So I guess if, I guess what I'm saying is if it doesn't turn out to be unanimous the first time, there's often a revote. So the people, if it, the two, assuming it's three to two, right? The two who were in the minority, then say, you know, I'll join the majority and make it a unanimous vote. So it's sort of a two-step, does that, am I making sense?
Maybe I'm not being clear. I, I guess.
Well, you're, you're hoping that everybody reaches the same decision.
I am, but, but the current, the way that Eric presented this before is he said that three people, if one candidate gets three votes, that would be our choice. But what I'm, what I was proposing is if we did a, we would need to have five votes to, to make a candidate versus three.
Let me comment if I could on that. So here's my thought, and Gabe and you others may have a different viewpoint, but this has been a, I think, a really good process to get three good candidates.
Strong, I'd say very strong.
Yeah.
Not even just good.
But strong, there you go. And who are, you know, one of the reasons we moved the process a little quickly was because we think that the, these candidates may be attractive to other districts, too. My concern, and I don't, I don't know that it would happen here, but imagine if, you know, four people were for a particular person and the fifth vote dug their heels in, and we have taken the position that it's got to be five to zero, or it stuck three to two, we could literally get into a position where we end up making no choice. And unless someone changed, thus two people changed their vote, for example. And what then? Do we go back through the entire process, having lost the fall as an opportunity? That would be my concern, that you end up with no choice in a really competitive environment. Now, I recognize that's the worst-case scenario, but that's my thought on the subject and that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't support making the, the vote unanimous. I certainly think as a matter of, of process, once, if it's a three to two vote, hopefully the two, as Dorothy said, would then say, well, you know, I support, you know, the position and we'll work with this, you know, so-and-so, you know? I, I think there are ways to, to handle that piece tactfully. But anyway, that's my thought. Gabe and Alice, I don't know how you, you guys feel about that?
I'll just well say, as far as the interview process, like when we had the screening committee, it was by majority who we were initially going to bring in. And then as far as the finalists went forward, we again went by the majority. So there was 12, so it was like.
It was three-fourths majority, wasn't it?
Three-fourths, yes, because, yes. Yeah. So it was not, it didn't have to be unanimous.
Gotcha.
Just for some background.
Yeah, I think, I think for me personally, it's us providing a conversation and a dialogue about each of the candidates that is only fair to them and fair to the community for them to kind of hear and understand our feedback and kind of what's going on and the decision of who we think is the best candidate. So as long as there is an opportunity for us to do that, I'm okay with it being majority versus unanimous.
Okay. Gabe, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a very important decision. At the core of it, I think a majority vote, I'll take a step back for a second. Having the discussion should cue each of us into what our thoughts are and where the vote will go. What, what I fear with a majority vote, which is only a three-person vote, is that a first motion, first person gets a majority, it's over type of scenario is very concerning, giving like the, the gravity of this decision. What I like about moving towards a majority is that even though we do have that discussion and we don't have a majority, gives us an opportunity to potentially give everyone a vote or to Dorothy's point, to ask for a revote and the minority join the majority. You know, I would just, I don't know how comfortable I would be if the first person we put a motion on gets a three-person vote and it's over.
It's entirely possible, and I know what you mean. The issue is, is that do other candidates get enough consideration? Hopefully, if we have a vibrant discussion, which seems to be the plan, before we even talk about a motion to appoint someone, then every candidate will have had their, had their moment, so to speak, where we'll talk about their strengths and what we see and so we'll have an open. And so we'll have an open and vibrant discussion about that. Everybody can be honest about how they feel. So everyone will be aired, so to speak, before we even take a motion. So I think that could obviate your consent.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Can I just make one more little point?
Sure, please.
That, and I'm sure you all understand this anyway, but it's part of my little soapbox spiel, so.
Good. I'm going to ask you to pull the microphone just a little closer.
So you, and I'm sure you all understand this, but you're going to be talking about people publicly and you're sort of holding your careers, their careers and their reputation in your hands. So we always advise that when you're talking about the different people, you're talking about the match of the person to the position, not people against each other.
Right.
Candidates against each other.
In terms of organizing the discussion, because I think we're all pretty aligned on the need for us to have this discussion. If we could do it in a way where we either do it alphabetically, but, you know, making sure that we are giving each of the candidates their time for a proper discussion, I think, is.
True.
I think alphabetically makes sense. Yeah, that's what we've done a lot, right, to the whole process.
Yeah. So when you, alphabetically, like you mean each candidate?
Like last name. So we, so for us, like it would be Bauer would be first, then Bruno, then Kushing. So it's, you do not, like, as we just discuss a lot.
Just for points of discussion.
Yeah, when we're sharing like reference stuff and just thoughts.
I'm trying to standardize it so that we're giving them equal time and discussion points, I guess.
Would it be possible for, if someone feels that, not necessarily in alphabetical order, or we could do that, but let's say hypothetically, I'm just going to speak hypothetically. Alice is in favor of Dan Bauer. And so we ask, you know, does anyone feel, you know, a specific candidate is one of their top choices and why? And kind of start that way, where we each go down and talk about.
So it goes by, it goes by school committee, man?
Yeah, because I feel like if we, if we just highlight someone, I'm not saying that there's any negative comments that are going to be made, but I think forcing a committee member to speak of someone or on behalf of someone who did not kind of considering in a top role may kind of cloud the conversation. What I'd love to hear is a conversation around, you know, I feel a particular way about candidate A and their qualifications, but B is right there as well. And so this is kind of where I'm sitting as opposed to taking my time to speak about candidate B, who may possibly be my third choice. And I don't think I'd be able to give him the attention they would deserve. I don't want to feel obligated to make a comment about every candidate. I want to focus on one, maybe two.
Well, I think it's only fair for us to know, though, that you feel that way about the candidate. So I think if we give you that platform to even share that, I think is what we're looking for in that discussion.
Right.
But how will I know that if I don't, if you don't abstain from providing feedback?
Well, I think the dialogue should be, you know, for example, Dr. Doherty, you know, what are your thoughts on the candidates? You know, which do you feel? And we go in that order. As opposed to candidates, we just go down the line and talk about who and why we feel would fit the role, you know? And that will force us, and that will clue me in. All right, Robin's candidate A and C, your candidate B and A. And I think that's the easiest way. And help me if I'm going in the right direction on this, but I think that's an easier way to do it than all of us talk about one candidate. And then by the time we're all done, I'm not necessarily sure if I'm going to know who or where we stand on a particular candidate.
But I also don't want that to sway someone. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. I like the alphabetically.
I think the open, I think the open dialogue in the format that I mentioned, I mean, that's the intention. It's not necessarily to sway, but it's for me to hear why you prefer someone. So it's not so much a swaying. It's what's your thought process on why someone's qualified and would fit within this district?
Okay.
And I think that's kind of, I want to give you my thought process on why I think a particular candidate is qualified and suitable for the district. And I think based on that, when we go to vote, there's no question what your position is, what yours is, et cetera.
Is that what you?
That's typically what I see.
Okay. All right.
Talk it out, please.
Yeah, no, because I, I mean, again, it's not about swaying. It's about, do we have a consensus? Like, are we all there and are we thinking about it in the right way? And I may be close. I may say, I could live with A or B.
Yeah. And I think it's definitely important, too. You know, if people are calling us or emailing us, you know, to keep that in mind. And obviously, the Google form that we can look at. So that's why I think as much information that we can receive from the community members, from those who have met any or all of the candidates to really give us that because there's only five of us voting, but we are representing the Danvers community and the, you know, what the Danvers community wants. So I'm just begging the community to give us feedback. And I promise you, it's anonymous. I don't know who the people, I don't want to know.
All right. I think that makes sense. I don't think we, I'm hearing the consensus is do this by motion versus by ballot. All right. Then that's the way we'll do it. And I think the discussion, we'll see if we can let it develop organically. We'll make sure that, you know, do our best to make sure everybody gets all the candidates. We talk about the potential fit and the strengths and what we see, and they deserve that respect, having gone through this process, which is, I'm sure, it's arduous to go through all of this and we need to respect that. And I'm also hearing that the consensus is that we'll aim for a majority vote versus a unanimous vote. And we'll play it from there. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right. Anything that you want to add, Dorothy, to what we're doing here? Okay.
No, it sounds like you've been thoughtful about it.
Anything, anyone on the committee wants to add before Monday?
Just what's the procedure going to be? We, we're going to finish our doctor, the last candidate?
Yep.
And then we'll take a break, I'm assuming, and then we'll come back and then we'll start our discussion.
Yeah, because we need to time, like, to look at the, like, I want to be able to look at, you guys have time to look at the feedback because I know a lot of us are coming right from work. So I want us to see, you know.
And will the candidates be here?
No.
No. Dorothy will call.
Okay.
Yeah. So once you, once you make your unanimous vote, I will call the candidate and ask them if they are going to accept the position and come back to you and let you know.